It's 5:30. I'll call our City Council into order. We have a packed agenda tonight. And so the first thing we have to do is, Pledge of Allegiance and Councilwoman Maddie Smith will give us.
Pledge of Allegiance, City of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, Pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
We have a packed agenda tonight and a packed crowd, so we're going to get on with things. We are honored tonight that Councilman Lon Reisman's granddaughter, Macy Hamilton, has agreed to lead us in our invocation tonight. She is an eighth grader and a member of the school, excuse me, high, junior high schools, Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Thank you for coming and doing this. He's proud of you. I've been hearing about this for a long time.
Will y'all bow your heads with me, please? Dearly Father, I ask that you protect this community and help us grow closer to you. Lord, I ask that you just help lead us in our daily lives and choices. I thank you for the people in this room who have dedicated time in their lives to help our community to improve and help it grow for better. Lord, I ask that you just help them make the best decisions possible for this town and community, and I ask that you watch over us closely and keep us protected from the dangers of this world. I ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Macy. We have several presentations tonight. First is the National Champion Recognition of the Stevieville FFA. I want y'all to call your names out if y'all want to come up here. They're coming from outside. I'm going to call their names out. Ooh, I know one of them. Sterling Richmond, Aiden McCann, Ali Foster, and Jaden McKinn- McKinnon, Shayla Mater, I'm terrified of this, Casey, Kaylee Fair, Charlie Fearbacher, Jake Goodwin, Turner Montgomery, Kenley Pack, Charlie Fearbacher. There's also several who competed but graduated last spring, so we will recognize them as well. Kirsten Klein, Keke Osinga, Peyton Vandenberg, and Mari- Mari Horwath. Recognize these folks for their... I'm going to photobomb you all the Council gets sent.
Doug, if you scoot over this way.
This way.
There you go.
There you go. You're too tall for that.
Okay, one, two, three. There you go. Thank you.
I'm nine inches above you, you're still six inches taller than me. Congratulations. I got those names about 10 minutes ago, so those who I butchered, I apologize in advance. I don't have any rares. Next thing is a presentation of donation from Keep Stevieville Beautiful, and I'm going to call Meta up here and her crowd. I'll let you take the podium.
I'm Jill Burke representing Keep Stevieville Beautiful, and as you can see, it is our pleasure to present a check for $3,500, and this is for the city's all-inclusive playground. I looked back over the past couple of years, and we've now presented or donated $15,500 in total. So I hope you can tell that we think it's a very important project, and I want to thank the city for initiating it. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Come over here.
Okay. Ready? One, two, three. Okay.
Proclamation? Someone up here, I want to read the proclamation, and we're going to have some... Are you going to speak first?
No, you speak first.
I'll speak first, all right. Now I'll let you get up there and speak.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll pass you right here. Right here, yeah. He didn't know you. I wouldn't say that.
He did, he got here early.
I won't say that. I have one here. We have up on our left is Brick Van Zant. Very good, is that right? All right. And Terry is going to say, give us a speech here in a minute?
Sure.
Sure. This is the Texas Treasure Award. The Texas Treasure Award pays tribute to our state's well-established businesses and their exceptional historical contributions to communities across Texas. And Swindles Jewelry was founded by Brady Big Red and Gracie Gus Swindle in Dublin, Texas, and has been a family-owned and operated jewelry store since 1942. And during World War II, Brady and Gracie founded a watchmaking school in the back of their store in Dublin, whereby disabled veterans returning home from war had an opportunity to learn a trade. And in 1950s, Swindle's Jewelry was mentioned in Ripley's Believe It or Not for their unusual name. Wow. In the early 1980s, Swindle's Jewelry became famous for originating the coin class rings designed by Pinky Swindle for Tarleton State University. And for over 80 years, our community has trusted this business with the most important days of their lives, and three generations of Swindle's family have served their customers. And Brick Van Zant, the great grandson of the orig- that's who that is, great. You know who he is now. It's coming back to you. Great grandson of the original owners, does now cultivating lasting business relationships with the great grandchildren of many of the original Swindle's Jewelry customers. Now therefore, I, Duxton Mayor, and the City of Stevieville, do hereby issue this proclamation of recognition to Swindle's Jewelry and recognition of the Texas Treasure Award.
So Brett, when we, when we, oh, let me introduce myself. I'm Terry Colley. I'm the retired Deputy Executive Director of the Texas Historical Commission. And when we devoted this award, businesses like Swindle's was exactly, precisely what we were thinking about. I mean, not just a business that has been there for a long time, but a business with a great story, just like you were saying, Mr. Mayor. And so when we decided to do this, we put together the guidelines and tried to make it as simple as we can. But your business there, what you're doing, it makes not only Stevieville proud, but it makes people all over the state of Texas proud at what you're continuing there as the, you said grandson?
Great grandson.
Oh, excellent, excellent. Well, we at the commission are very proud to present this to you. Congratulations.
One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you.
No way, a lot to overcome just for the name. It's always an honor when we have a new police officer that gets sworn in. They usually do it here in front of City Council, and we're going to turn that over to Dan, our Chief of Police, and to Sarah, who's going to participate.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the Stevieville City Council, thank you for letting this opportunity to introduce Officer Daniel Glenn, our newest Stevieville Police Officer. I want to take just a second to tell you a little about his career as he is a lateral officer that's coming to us from the state of Kansas. He began his career with the City of Salina Police Department in 2014, and while there, he served in the patrol division, he served as a field training officer, a drug recognition expert, and also served in the traffic unit. Officer Glenn was awarded a Gold Valor Award from the Kansas Association of the Chiefs of Police for his actions he took during an active shooter incident. Prior to leaving the Salina Police Department, Officer Glenn was promoted to detective and mainly investigated crimes against children as part of that criminal investigations division. Prior to joining the Stevieville Police Department, he also served as a police sergeant with the Kansas State University Police Department. He is joined today by his wife Jennifer and daughter Haley, and Mrs. Glenn, Jennifer, will pin his badge on just prior to the oath of office.
He's a big guy. He's been right this fine.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Daniel Glenn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Police officer of the City of Stevieville.
Police officer of the City of Stevieville.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Will preserve.
Will preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
When he walks up to you and he's going to give you a ticket, everybody's going to hit the floor. I guarantee the biggest guy is. Welcome to the floor, sir.
Thank you.
Next item is general discussion. I don't have any cards. Does anybody turn anything in?
You have one more, Mr. Mayor. Why say anything more?
That's right. Dan first.
There you are. They're making official. They want to get paychecked.
Again, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the Stevieville City Council, and to those who are watching us online and citizens of Stevieville, it is my distinct honor and privilege tonight to present this award. I would like to tell you about the circumstances that are surrounding it. On Saturday, June 20th, 2024, at approximately 2:30 PM, Officer Paula Mays was in the near vicinity of Walmart when she received a radio dispatch call regarding a theft taking place at that location at Walmart. Suspect had been observed by Walmart Asset Protection Staff committing a theft. Staff attempted to stop the individual, who refused. The suspect was observed getting into a vehicle as Officer Mays arrived on scene. Officer Mays was able to stop the vehicle and immediately advise the subject, the suspect, to exit the vehicle. Suspect refused multiple commands to exit and had locked herself in the vehicle. As Officer Mays requested additional units for assistance, the suspect continued to refuse all lawful orders. She refused them all. Suspect then retrieved a knife from inside the vehicle and began violently stabbing herself in the neck. Officer Mays immediately, without hesitation and at great risk of harm to herself, utilized her collapsible steel baton and shattered the driver's side window. Simultaneously, Officer Mays was notifying dispatch of the violent situation, of which dispatch immediately notified the fire department and EMS units to respond, and they were immediately sent to her location. But then second, breaking, upon breaking the window, Officer Mays was able to remove the suspect from her vehicle and stopped her from attacking herself and was able to get her to drop the knife. Officer Mays then was able to secure the individual with the assistance of additional arriving units at this time. Officer Mays and the additional officers began treating the individual's stab wounds until fire and EMS arrived on scene and took over medical care. In a matter of seconds, this individual had stabbed herself 16 times in the neck. She has since survived and is receiving further treatment thanks to the immediate and selfless actions of Officer Paula Mays, who without hesitation took those actions stopping this violent attack at great risk to her own safety. The heroic actions of Officer Mays are exemplary of the top-notch professionalism of the men and women of the Stevieville Police Department, and today she is receiving the Stevieville Police Department Life Saving Award, which was placed around her neck by her husband, Walter, and her son, Gunner. As her family members place that life-saving medal around her, would you please join me in recognizing her great work?
One, two, three. We're going to do three. One, two, three, and one more.
Dan.
Yes, sir.
Sarah, do we have any discussion, citizens? And we'll go to the next item, real agenda. For the Order of the Election for May 4th, General Election.
Yes, so we have contracted with Eraz County for the May 4th general election, so we just are requesting that council approve the order of the election for council member place two, place four, place six, place eight, and the mayor's position.
Okay, we need a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the election order, if necessary.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next thing, Dan, you're back up again.
Yes, sir.
Stevieville Department Racial Profiling Report. It's interesting reading.
Sir, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, again, distinguished members of the council, tonight I present our 2023 Racial Profiling Report in accordance with state law as for the calendar year of 2023. Stevieville Police Department has in the past and continues to engage Del Carmen Consulting, LLC, to perform audits in a manner that is consistent with normative statistical practices, and their company have produced, they, he, and their, his company have produced this report. This is a more detailed and reliable analysis of our 2023 traffic stops. The data included in this report that you have in your packet and that the public has access to there has demonstrated that Stevieville Police Department has complied with the Texas racial profiling law and all of its requirements. Furthermore, we have a comprehensive racial profiling policy. We offer information to the public on how to file a complaint or a complaint, and we commission the quarterly audits also with Del Carmen Consulting, and we ensure that racial profiling is not tolerated. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members, I'm honored to report that during calendar year 2023, the top-notch professional men and women of the Stevieville Police Department received no complaints of having violated the Texas racial profiling law. Receiving zero complaints after conducting 7,075 traffic stops. Page 13 of your attached report reflects the race breakdown and continues with categories of our stops. I would like to share a couple of those with you. First in the race shot, or chart, again, middle of page 13 on your report, Stevieville Police Officers, of the 7,075 stops they conducted 6,230 times, they had no idea what or did not perceive what the race was of those individuals. So only in 845 of 7,075 stops did we suspect that we knew the race of that individual we were stopping. Of the 7,075 traffic stops, we issued 5,367 warnings. We issued 1,349 traffic citations, and we arrested 359 individuals, again, as a result of those total stops. We conducted 668 searches of the 7,075 vehicles that we stopped. That resulted in 188 drug seizures, 20 weapons being seized, and 54 seizures of alcohol. Of the 7,775 traffic stops, four resulted in minor bodily injuries occurring when we had to use physically, physical force during that stop, during those stops. In conclusion, the Stevieville Police Department is committed to complying with the racial profiling law of the state of Texas, and as mentioned, serving as top-notch professional law enforcement officers, we have a zero tolerance to any form whatsoever of racial profiling. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Questions for Dan. Thank you, sir. I appreciate the work that you and your staff do every day.
Yes, sir.
24 hours a day.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next item is Consider Approval of Resolution to Support Regarding Texas Department of Transportation Prioritization of U.S. 377 Projects. Am I going to turn that over to you, Jason?
Yes, sir. As some of you may be aware, we've been working with TechDOT over the last year to develop some projects within Stevieville, and the mayor and I specifically have had several meetings and conversations with local TechDOT staff, the area staff, as well as the district staff, and so we worked to identify the five that are listed in this resolution, and they sent me a letter requesting a resolution from the council that agrees with these priorities and their prioritization, and a vote of the council saying that, and we could send that back to them and help move this process on to the next step for some of these projects.
I can tell you in our meetings, they had a list, and Jason immediately jumped on top of it and said, "Those priorities don't necessarily look like the ones that are best for Stevieville, Texas," and advocated for us, and they, to their credit, they came back and asked why, and we explained why, and they have redone that list. I appreciate the hard work you did, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Anybody have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2024-R-02, supporting the TechDOT proposed projects as presumed.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is, I guess, there you are, Dan. I mean, Sarah, next time, just put them in order, just put it, like, you know, put them all on the list there.
Just set it up there.
Yeah, just stay there.
Yes, sir. The first grant application asking for approval for this resolution is for the state, both are the officers of the Governor's State of Texas Public Safety Office. First one is for rifle-resistant body armor. That is body armor that will be placed on the outside of what we wear as our daily armor, or as our soft body armor. It's a 100% reimbursement totaling $40,026.98, and that's for each officer of the 43 Stevieville Police Officers to have a rifle-resistant body armor vest. There's, any questions on that one? Be happy to answer those.
Questions. What's the lifespan of this particular arm?
Generally, 10 years. Some are five, some are 10, but I believe this one, correct Sergeant Donnelly, is going to be 10 years?
I don't have the time, I see it as five or 10.
Right. The minimum of five. Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Part of that, we are replacing old armor with this grant. Yes, sir.
Mayor, a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the rifle resistance, res- 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 body armor grant application.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members, council, from the same grant office, from the Governor's Office, Public Safety Office, is the helmet, is their ballistic helmets, also to do the same thing to stop rifle rounds and, or any type of round for that matter, that would be shot toward us. There are 43 of those helmets, 100% reimbursement, no matching requirement, for a total of $19,092.
Questions for Dan? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the ballistic helmet grant application.
Second.
Have a motion.
Was that Lon? Yes.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Leanne, is that, next one yours?
I got it.
You got it?
Okay.
Yes. Jason, can I handle that for me?
Mr. Mayor, council, if you remember some time ago, more than a year, we started the Wayfinding Sign Project in earnest, and as we began working through the design, we also had brought retail strategies onboard and started in the, kind of the downtown planning, and then we brought the branding campaign onboard. So we kind of stopped on the wayfinding sign for a minute and went through the branding campaign, and so we got our new logo and got everything done with it. And so as part of your packet, if you look, is a proposed design, there's a PDF in there of what, what the new wayfinding signs would look like as we installed those around town. If I remember correctly, I think we were talking about 40 or 50 signs, somewhere around there in different areas, that would identify specific areas and target visitors and other folks into those areas. So what, what staff is asking of you this evening is a vote to approve the sign design and the attached contract that'll move us into the next phase of the project, which does align with the budgeted amounts that we had set aside in the tourism budget for the project.
Leanne, I appreciate all your leadership. Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion? Do I have discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I would like to make the motion that we approve the agreement for services for the wayfinding.
And the design?
And the design.
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Again, thanks for letting us.
I'm sorry, can I say one thing?
Absolutely.
Is there a way that we could maybe post that where people watching online can see what, what we have? I don't know. If there's not, there's not. I'm sorry.
We can get it on the website tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Steve, he walked in the room, saw all these people here, and he says, "Are they all here for my evaluation?"
I thought it was just fanfare.
As always. You see, 2/3 of this is, no, not.
And now I see the cheese trying to take my title here on most time at the podium, so he wins tonight. The fee waiver request before you is from Mr. Glockson. He's representing retirement for senior living. You might recall that project out on Lingaville Highway. We had quite a bit of public input on that back in the day when we were trying to get the zoning adjusted on that. We first started off looking at R3 zoning. That wasn't very well received by the adjacent neighborhoods, so we ended up with a PD, and Mr. Glockson's been working with us ever since then. This was first presented to council in 2022. It was one of four projects that was being considered for the Stevieville area through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for competitive housing tax credits. On February 15th, 2022, City of Stevieville resolved to support the proposed development for the retirement living for seniors, and again, this is out on the Lingaville Highway. Mr. Glockson is looking at his permit fees for this project. He has agreed and is willing to pay the building permit fee, which is roughly $36,036. That leaves a delta of $48,028.44 for the remaining fees. $10,718.94 of those fees would be actually pass-through fees or hard dollars that the city would incur for tap fees and engineering review fees with our third-party engineering firm. The remaining fees would be related to plan reviews, parkland dedication, other fees that I could categorize as soft fees, not necessarily directly out of pocket, but what the taxpayers are paying for staff time on the reviews. So Mr. Glockson did drive in tonight, and he is here to answer any questions. And in your packet, I included, just, again, this was a PD, so I have the site plan there for you as a reminder of what we were talking about. This is for 48 units for single, or senior housing on Lingaville Highway. There's also rendering there, as well as the zoning reflecting the PD decision in 2022. So with that, may I be glad to answer any questions?
Questions for Steve or the requister?
Explain where the plan review fees go, again?
So plan review fees are basically the staff time involved in reviewing all of the submittals for the project.
This is at least the second year, maybe, maybe even more than that.
It's the second year here in Stephenville, but they've been, it's been established since, um.
Twenty plus years.
Yes, I wanna say.
Well, I guess the point, the point of the question is that this will, this will give us additional information. I think we need to start.
Yes.
Actually pegging out what the impact for this money that we're, that we're giving.
Right, I agree. And I, the one thing that, um, that I thought was great for the city was, and it's on, in the packet, that it is a qualifying event for the Hui, Hui, Hui Junior Patriot, the Vegas World Finals, and the American. And we are, and this event is on their websites. So I think that gives us some major websites to at least have more traffic to come back to Stephenville.
And y'all will be geo-fencing and collecting that data this year, so next year.
Yes, ma'am.
Ashley, is that something y'all can do as well? We hear a motion.
Uh, sorry. I would make the emotion that we, um, approve the hot funds application for the Joe Beavers Junior Superstar Roping for five thousand dollars.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Anything else, Leah?
Yes, sir. That's all for me.
Thank you. Lauren, Parks and Leisure.
Yeah, so Mayor, Parks and Leisure Committee met back on January sixteenth, brought, well, brought to the full council on a vote that we consider the approval of sports feasibility study with Synergy Sports. The feasibility study would be fifteen thousand dollars. If you have any questions, Darren's here, I'm here, we can answer them.
Questions for Lauren or Darren?
How long would the report take to generate?
Six weeks.
Six weeks?
Yeah, pretty, pretty, pretty short. Yep.
And I, I think we discussed this before in committees, but they're gonna give us a breakdown of things that, like a one-year plan, or three-year plan, five-year, things to, it's gonna be broken down that way? Or am I remembering?
They're gonna come in and evaluate, well, what, what would fit Stephenville.
Right.
And.
Yeah, so he's really looking at what fits our demographics, basically, and, and what our competitors are out there, and what, what other niche would be specifically, and kinda giving us an idea of what we could, what we could do based on our tourism and the impact that would have.
Okay.
What fits our community, yeah.
Anybody else have questions?
I'm looking at you, man. I know you're gonna, I know you're gonna have something.
Come on, Monica.
So, i- is, is this gonna be facilities-related only, or is he gonna look at pro, is it gonna be programmatic analysis?
Well, I mean, pieces of it are gonna be programmatic, 'cause the facility's gonna be built specifically for certain things, right? So, um, he kinda went into this. One of his things, he, I guess this is what he tells his Texas clients, y'all don't need a lot of baseball fields built in Texas. There's baseball fields all over the place, so you have a lot of competition. So he's looking at places where we don't have competition, and, and what specific program niches we have, or what do we have a partner in Tarleton that they're doing that maybe we don't have a place to do it? So indoor track and field is something they're doing now. There's only three indoor track and field places in the state of Texas right now. So, do we have the potential to do something with that? So wrestling, taekwondo, all those kinda things. He's looked at a bunch of different sports.
And what, but we're also looking for things within our community that, that, that our students, our, our kids in this community need to.
So we know.
We include pickleball.
I guess so many calls about pickleball.
Most, so most of his designs include multi-use lines on all their sport courts, right? So it's gonna have basketball and volleyball, which any court's gonna have, but it's also gonna go across it and have pickleball. He's got lines for tennis and some of them where he can put up indoor tennis nets and do indoor tennis and stuff like that. So he's got a, he tries to make it as multifunctional as possible, to have as many different revenue streams as possible to pay the bills.
Anybody else? Lauren, do I hear a motion?
Uh, I can make, I'd make a motion that we, um, have a conservative approval for a sports facility study with Synergy Sports. Um, we're approximately at fifteen thousand dollars for the feasibility study.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That's, that's it.
Okay. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Williams is gonna vie for the champion of podium time with the other two.
Oh, no.
Public Works Committee met on sixteen January, and quite a few items on the list. The first one was a professional services agreement proposal with LGA. LJ-A, sorry. Even with glasses, I can't see. Um, so, Mr. Williams, tell us about LJ-A.
Yes, sir. So, this particular, uh, agreement allows us to transition from our existing third-party reviewer. And LJ-A, uh, we met with them in person, and were very impressed with, uh, all of the things that they brought to the table. I think they're gonna be a good fit for us to help, uh, again, transition to a new third-party independent reviewer, specifically for development reviews, pla- plans, and, um, there's provisions in there that allow us to use them for other, um, code updates or that sort of thing, if they have prior approval. Specifically, they would have a focus on stormwater review. But again, we're very impressed with the amount of expertise that they brought to the table and professionalism. We would have the same ten-to-fourteen day turnaround time as we do now. So, we do support going into agreement with LJ-A.
Questions?
So, the city has no prior experience with this particular engineering firm, right?
That's correct.
But y'all's meeting went swimmingly well.
It went swimmingly well. That's a, a nice way to put it.
Swimmingly, y'all.
And so, and you're right, anybody can put on a good face for a little bit of this interview, but, um, it went so well that, uh, I, I don't have any reservations about moving forward with them.
And this will eclipse, clip all ties with F and I?
Well, there are several projects under review right now, but yes, it will allow us to make that transition.
I do have a motion. I'd like to move that we approve professional services agreement with LJ-I. LJ-A, what is the deal? Engineering as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next item.
Next item is another professional service agreement with Reftellis Financial Consultants. You, we have been talking for some time now about where we stand with stormwater situation, and these guys are willing to undertake putting together a, a rate study for, so, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. So a very similar story here. We met with, uh, these folks also. Finance and myself did, again, impressed with the amount of work, quantity and quality of work that they, that they presented. They would, i- in fact, put together some short and long-term goals for our, uh, stormwater infrastructure, which, as you know, is sorely underfunded for capital projects. They're gonna put together a financial rate model for us and a specific five-year plan based upon those capital projects that we identify. Not only that, they'll be able to look into, uh, recommendations for our code ordinances and how we, um, structure the rate model for charging for stormwater. And so we'll bring all that back to council before any changes are made, obviously. But the, again, very impressed with them. The budget accounted for fifty thousand dollars, and they're coming in just under, just over three thousand dollars under budget, so. We feel like we're getting a good deal here so far.
Let's be sure that we get prioritized. Spring Bouquet, is that the street?
It's, it's on the list, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We, we promised I was hoping to do something about that. Mark, I hear a motion?
Well, let me ask one question before I get to that. So, um, what was my question? My question was, they're gonna present some kind of a model to us, I assume. Is that gonna be able, are we gonna be able to manipulate that in the House moving forward?
Yes, sir. So they, they will provide us with a tool that we'll be able to use and input some numbers, and so we'll be able to see how those numbers affect, uh, how the projects get funded. So it does give us some latitude and some flexibility to go in and, and work, uh, within that rate model without having to call on them every time we need something.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we enter into professional services agreement with Reftellis Financial Consultants to do the aforementioned work for us.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is the annual renewal for the Upper Leon Water District. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. This was, uh, just coming to the council to let you know that we did specifically budget for this raw water charge. It's a hundred and seventy-four thousand ninety-seven dollars, and it is exactly that amount that was, um, approved in the budget. And just, we're seeking authorization to pay those bills. So it was really a pretty short and sweet presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement with Upper Leon River Municipal Water District as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Then we'll get to some change orders. The first one's on Long Street. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. Long Street, uh, while the project is going well, we, we have an issue in front of the rec hall. The original plans called for the sidewalk to be placed, uh, behind where the cars parked directly in front of the rec hall. We thought better of that to move that to in front of those cars, just outside the steps of the rec hall. When we do that, because of the way that those steps were added on previously, uh, to the rec hall building, there's no ADA, there's no ADA compliance there. There's no way to make that ADA compliant without tearing those out. And so, we worked with the Parks Department, and the change order that's proposed in here is just under seven thousand dollars for, uh, for the public works side of it. But the significant part is the steps, and that's just over fifty-eight thousand dollars from the Parks Department budget. And that's gonna come out of funds that, uh, were previously allocated for, uh, I believe, a restroom renovation project that was put on hold. So the funds are available.
Just won't fix the toilets.
Where's Darren?
It's a little bit bigger scope.
It's a little bigger scope, alright.
Questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve change order number five as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is change orders for Harbin Drive. Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir. This is change order number seven. The previous change orders have been approved. Uh, this is, uh, directly related to the traffic signal controller that while it was, um, shown in the plans, there was no mechanism in the bid specifications for the contractor to be reimbursed for it. So Tech Todd did not miss this, but it, it is an expense that the contractor should be reimbursed for. We just simply didn't have a way to do that throughout the, throughout the plans. And, um, again, looking forward to transitioning to a new service provider with LJ-A.
Questions, comments?
As soon as possible.
Hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve change order number seven as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. At TML, I did have a come-to-Jesus meeting with those folks. Next item.
Next item, sir, and last item, no action taken on this one. During the, during the meeting, the committee talked about, based on a letter that was received by, I think, pretty much everybody sitting up here, about a, a woman's property that was abused by a contractor. We had a, a discussion about how contractors operate within the city limits, and, uh, recommendation from the committee at that time was to have Mr. King, Mr. Williams, the others, put together a, a set of do's and don'ts, a policy list, if you will, that every contractor that comes to Stephenville will, will be given when they pull permits, and, and it will, it will allow them to know exactly how we do business in Stephenville. And that's how we do it, and we don't do it any other way, and these guys are gonna take care of it. So I think that's forthcoming. No action on that one, sir. That is the end of the Public Works Committee.
Mr. Basket?
Mr. Mayor, the Development Services Committee meeting met on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. All committee members were present. Uh, at the time, we had, uh, Steve Keen, uh, Development, uh, Development Services Director. Uh, he spoke and shared some information regarding strategies used by the city college station, uh, specifically in the area known as North Gate. Uh, the committee, uh, provided input on the information provided and expressed interest, interest in the city pursuing similar tactics. I believe, uh, Steve, you should have, uh, some more information for us in the next, by the next committee meeting, or are we talking?
Absolutely, sir.
Awesome. Thank you, Steve. Uh, no formal action was needed or taken. Uh, are there any questions?
I did have a developer call me the other day, Friday, asked me if we're gonna be done then, interested in the project.
Fantastic. That concludes, uh, the Development Services Committee report.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Personnel Committee. Mr. Greenhalgh.
Alright, uh, we had our committee meeting on January sixteenth. Uh, the first thing we, uh, talked about, uh, discussed the updated salary survey, and, uh, City Manager and myself, we're gonna put together a group to, uh, review, uh, the salary survey. And, uh, over the next, uh, few months, we'll, we'll be putting together, uh, taking a look at how we might be, uh, updating our, uh, salary structure before, uh, October. Uh, no action needed or taken on that. The, uh, next thing was, uh, discuss the incentive programs through Stephenville Fire Department, Stephenville Police Department. Chief Harris presented a goal incentive program, the Police Department, and Chief Isbell presented one for the Fire Department. Programs or goals for the council to consider in future budget, uh, budget discussions. Mr. King presented a modified incentive program for the remainder of this budget cycle, the cycle that can be worked out with both, uh, departments if approved by the whole council. And we did recommend to the whole council, uh, the addition of one hundred thousand dollars to the budget for this fiscal year to be allotted evenly to the Stephenville Fire Department, Stephenville Police Department through these incentive programs. Uh, if there's any, uh, discussions or questions on these incentive programs, uh, Chief Harris and Chief Isbell are available to field any questions on those.
Questions for the two chiefs?
Fire, and what we've done is, we've, we've tried to, uh, im- improve the existing incentives in the direction that we would like our certification of professional development growth, uh, for our service delivery to the citizens. Uh, I did look across, uh, several cities, uh, some of the old, uh, survey comparisons that we'd done before, but those and others, to see what the comparisons were in incentives. And they're, they're really, it's so different, uh, city to city, in the service delivery, because the, what we wanna incentivize here is a little different than what some of the other cities incentivize. However, saying that, uh, the total incentive plans are about on par with all the comparison cities. It's just different in the individual certification. So, um, uh, on the Fire Department one, you'll see the, the graph. The green bars are existing certifications that we incentivize today, and the blue is the direction we'd like to head, incentivizing those, uh, certifications and developments that are most important to us.
Questions? Can I present?
Mr. Mayor, just to add to that, um, increasing longevity and retention, two of our key goals there. In the documents I hand you, they are revised what you originally had in your folder. So at the top of the policy, you'll see revised and read in today's date on there. And there was a change in the educational pay. On the back, you'll see that. The two parts that we're looking at funding with this amount of money, if, if approvals received, are the edu, the higher education pay and the certificate pay. Those are both highlighted on your spreadsheet for that total at the bottom there, with, with each employee that would receive that. If, and then, if there's any questions, be happy to answer those.
Questions for the two chiefs?
So both of you, if you incentivize in particular areas, you're gonna get more activity in those areas? Does that show the experience?
Absolutely. We talked about last time also, so there's a return in investment, and that's what we are looking to receive on both of those. Whereas, um, we ask a lot of the men and women in the Police Department to go above and beyond, and the Fire Department also, not to speak for them, but to go above and beyond with what their daily job is as a police officer or firefighter, paramedic. And this is, uh, part of, to fund that, yes, sir. To re, I'd say reward would be the right word for that, but to incentivize them to go, they've got to go get further education. They've got to go and spend a lot of extra time outside of their normal duties to obtain these certi- certifications, or higher education, so to be a college degree of some sort. Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Yep, and on the Fire Department side, uh, we hire firefighter EMTs. We incentivize paramedic and have always. Uh, today, we're, we're woefully short in paramedics on the street. We've hired a lot of EMTs. We want them to get that extra training to be paramedics, uh, on the ambulance. So this, this is, will go a long ways and help fill that gap.
So what you're asking, not, Brandon?
Uh, yes, uh, I'd like to, I move that, uh, we approve the Stephenville Fire Department, Stephenville Police Department incentive programs, uh, as presented by the chiefs.
Is it, is it a certain amount that we need?
It's, uh, one hundred thousand dollars.
One second. Have a motion, is that you, Mark?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any else, Brandon?
Uh, that concludes the Personnel Committee.
Okay, we have two items for executive session tonight. Are you wanna make your report first, and we'll go to executive session? Okay. Alright, in accordance with, we're gonna go to executive session, we have two items. One in per, in, uh, public sa- or public safety, and another one's gonna be in, uh, economic development. So, section five-five-one, point oh-seven-four, personnel matters, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dis- dismissal of a public officer or employee to with E-Rath County Joint Dispatch Center Communications, uh, Manager. And also, in accordance with section five-five-one dot oh-eight-seven, deliberating regarding economic development negotiations, project reload. I need to sometime figure out where these, not names come from. We'll be back.
He doesn't know. You know that, right? He has no idea.
He has no idea.
Executive session back into our regular session, and we'll go back to public safety. Do we have a motion from executive session? Let him settle down. Got any stories about some old music while we're thinking?
Well, I've learned a lot about that. Sorry, folks, it's a little moving a little slow. Okay. I would like to move that we hire Eret County Joint Dispatch, uh, Communications. I have found, folks, that when you get to be my age, you can't create a sentence. So sometimes I have to start and go whoops, and come back and give it another shot, all right? The job title is the Eret County Joint Dispatch Center Communications Manager. And I would like, uh, make the motion that we create that position and we also create the funding for that position.
Second. Have a motion is second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Boy, did y'all see that, that was a robust.
Plus the person.
That's what it was, aye, I got you. Appreciate you, Bob.
So skillful.
Good job, Bob. I just love your jokes about music. Next item, financial reports, Monica.
Mayor, Council, this is the budget report for the period ending December 31st, 2023. We're three months into our fiscal year. Most of our financial indicators are as or better than we anticipated, except for property taxes a little low. We received 2.8 million in property taxes in the month of December. That is 313,000 over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. It's 48% of our budget, and that's about 72,000 less than we anticipated. We received 742,000 in sales tax in December. That's 49,000 or 2% more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. It's 27% of our budget, and that's about 235,000 higher than we anticipated. Of the 11.7 million revenue received to date, 60% was received in the general fund. 30% was received in our water wastewater fund, and 3% was received in our landfill fund. We received 30% of our total budgeted revenues through December, and that's 1.5 million more than anticipated. That's due to taxes, building permits, charges for services, investment income, and debt proceeds. We've received 233,000 less revenue than December last fiscal year to date, and that's due to, um, there was higher debt proceeds received last year than this year. Of the 8.6 million spent today, 57% was expended in the general fund. 37% was expended in the water wastewater fund, and 4% was expended in the landfill fund. We've expended 12% of the total budgeted expenditures through December, which is seven and a half million less than, less than anticipated. That's due to personnel vacancies, contractual, and a big chunk of it is our capital outlay. We spent 2 million less in expenditures through December than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to contractual expenditures and capital outlay. I think we're just getting off to a slow start this year. And CETA has received an overall 29% of their budgeted revenue through December. That's eight thousand more than last fiscal year to date, and 36,000 more than anticipated, and that's their two income sources are taxes and interest income. They've spent an overall 9% of their budgeted expenditures through December. It's 48,000 more than last fiscal year to date due to personnel and grant dispersments. And it's 259,000 less than anticipated for contractual capital outlay and grant dispersments. Are there any questions?
Questions for Monica. Investment report, please.
So this investment report is for our quarter for the three periods ending December 31st, 2023. Our total market value of our cash and investments on December 31st was 56,340,019. This is allocated 4% in our demand accounts, 1% in cash and money market accounts, 3% in certificates of deposits, 53% in Techstar investment pool, and 39% in our techs pool investment pool. We earned 733,161 dollars in interest for the quarter. The average yield to maturity for all of our account tops for the quarter was 5.13%. The average yield to maturity for our investment accounts for the quarter was 5.38%. And that's compared to the average yield to maturity for the three-month treasury bill for the quarter was 5.28%. So we're pretty much about on target. The weighted average maturity in days of our portfolio was 6.26 days, so we're still very liquid. And according to what I've read in the Federal Reserve and the comp trailers, we should anticipate a moderate, uh, towards more normal growth than our 2024. So the last couple of years, we've seen a lot of growth in our sales tax. And so instead of being this way, we're probably going to see it a little less. So that's what we're seeing on trend so far.
Questions for Monica.
Quantify that.
So, um, I like on our sales tax where we, um, in the couple of years past, we were like a million dollars over budget. Well, right now, we're sitting, what'd I say, about 235,000 higher. I don't think that we're going to get to the million dollars this year, so.
How much did we increase our budget for sales tax this year over last?
Uh, we did not increase our, we, we left it.
Flat.
Flat, so.
Anybody else, questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody want to say anything to Jeff before he gets up there? Did you bring gifts tonight, Jeff?
I just scoffed at the fact that you said other people had a lot of time up here, so. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you guys. Always like following Monica, I say this every month because we get to hear all the great sales tax stuff. And even though it's a little flatter, we're gonna, that's our challenge to make sure it's not as flat.
Challenge accepted?
Yes, our challenge accepted, 100%. This day, so you know, King Charles is in the, getting some treatment for some medical issues. And so it just came up when I was doing some of these things. Queen Elizabeth, it was 72 years ago today when Queen Elizabeth, his mother, succeeded her father to the British throne to become queen. So that's something that happened on this day. Also on this day, 59 years ago, The Righteous Brothers, You've Lost That Lovin' Feeling was hit number one. So it is a great song. So we'd like to go ahead and start with that, and Mark, I think you were going to lead us, so.
Actually, Sarah said she wanted to start.
Okay, well, we can do that. Uh, well, we've taken up a lot of time, so we'll just stop. Birthdays, Babe Ruth today, uh, is his, was his birthday in 1890. He lived to be 53. Ronald Reagan had a birthday today, lived to be 93. Bob Marley had a birthday today, uh, lived to be 36. And then, I don't know if this was, Bob, if you like this or not, Axl Rose, Guns N' Roses. I don't know if that was a thing or if that's not really your music guy. He's 62 today, you know, he has a real appetite for destruction. Only one or two of y'all will get that. And then I think that our next presidential candidate, and this is why, Rick Astley, remember Rick Astley, also a pop singer? You know, he pledged since 1987 that he's never going to give you up, he's never going to let you down. He's never going to run around and desert you. He's never going to make you cry, he's never going to say goodbye, he's never going to tell a lie or hurt you. So I just thought that was.
Did you just rip off those?
I kind of did, I kind of did, so anyway. Good stuff. You know, it's interesting whenever you're doing these things, and I know we always, we try to tie all that in because it is kind of a fun thing to get off of the normal business deal for a minute. But when you think about some of these birthdays and some of the things that happen, and you look at their ages, you know, I just gave you a 53-year-old or, uh, year-old and a, and a 93-year-old and their accomplishments. And for most part, people have heard of many of the people that I talk about up here. I only pick, handpick certain ones. And you think about in their life cycle, the things that they accomplish for either themselves or for others. Now, I remember back when I was in high school, I selected amongst about three, three others that, um, for these future leader things or whatever. And they had this big interview in the newspaper, and they talked about, and the brightest thing that was said, unfortunately, was not by me, I wish it had been. But there's one of my colleagues there, uh, we're all 16, 17 years old, and he had said something that really has rung true even to this day. He said that, you know, when I die, I just want to make sure that more than a paragraph or more than just an obituary is written about me. Now, that was a little bit self-serving, I get that, but I kind of take that into the, the things that all of you guys do, all the things that we all do here in, in a home, that in our life, and we don't know how many years we have, but that we have an opportunity in that life, whether it's 30 years or 40 or 100 years or whatever, to give back and do something and make a difference for others. And so that always is something that, that rings true. I really think about that a lot, and, and the pressure, you know, when we talk about, and we kind of joke about sales tax for others. Yeah, we have an opportunity in front of us to increase those sales taxes or whatever it is that's out in front of you, and in those different committees that you all represent. So I throw that out there and let you know that we are working steadily to try to do, accomplish some of those goals at CETA. Wanted to give you a couple of different things here. This last week, I had dinner in Dallas with, uh, with not only the owners of Clean Control, which is now open, we've talked about that for many months. But they have started production. In fact, this right here is the very first bag that ran off of the lines in, uh, here in Stevieville, Texas for one of their product lines. And they are expanding their lines. When we talked the other night, they're going to bring a couple of more products in. They have equipment coming in, they have about five people currently, they're going to be nine by the end of the week. They'll have about 15 by the end of March, uh, and in continuing on that upward trajectory as they get more lines in. You've probably driven by the building, and we call it the old Raylock building, but now it's the Clean Control building. They've put in about a million dollars into that facility so far. So it's, uh, it's one of those things that is not only looking better, but also serving the good for job creation and also for products that are going to be developed. Now, I think, Mark, you may have said this, uh, before, we talked about having Stevieville, Texas on the back of all those bags. The first thing they're going to do is, is put made in the USA, because some of the products that they're going to be producing here that have heretofore not been made in the U.S., but will allow them to have an opportunity to grow into, for example, 5,600 Walmart stores across the United States, all out of this, uh, operation right here in Stevieville. So I talked to the owner and met all of their product people as well, the people that supply some of their products that they create and manufacture to get the end product. And they are going to put Stevieville, Texas on it, so that'll be cool. So we're, we're getting there. Industry is another thing, we have two other projects, Project Feather and Project J24. The mayor mentioned both of these in his State of the City address the other day. Both of those have moved several steps forward. Obviously, I can't disclose what those are right now, but let's just say they're moving in the right direction for Stevieville. Both of those are good paying, uh, have good paying jobs, and both of those will have some, uh, some new industry for us here in, in Stevieville. So those are very positive things. The other, last week, Ashley and I attended the ICSC Red River Conference in Dallas as well, and we met with a number of people. One of the cool things about it is, is this is, this is a, a group of folks from all over the nation, it's not as big as the Vegas one that the mayor joins us on, but, uh, it is sort of a Texas-based one, and we had the opportunity to meet with a lot of people. We've changed things up a little bit. What, you, you hear me talk a lot, particularly with our board and others, about building the bench with new things, new restaurants, new hotels, new things like that. Do new retail outlets and so forth, which we always want to do. I get very nervous when I get a week or two without a lead or without somebody calling us and, or us calling. So we call them, and we really work hard on this. We had, I don't know, Ashley, a couple of dozen appointments and, and meetings with people all across the, uh, from all over the United States. But we have shifted slightly in that world. Instead of speaking to the end users, instead of speaking to store X, for example, we talk a lot to brokers and developers now. We think that those connections are very big for us, site selectors, real estate folks, uh, those kind of people are, we've got to get them to know about Stevieville. And we have a lot of other things that are helping us promote Stevieville, from Tarleton to just general things that are happening in our community. But, but we also have to continue to push the name. And I can tell you, Mayor, you have this firsthand, I know you could, you could vouch for this, but it just, over the last four, five years, the, the recognition of Stevieville is, it's, it's unbelievable. One day, I wish you all could hear from these people where they know this. Oh, my marketing person, oh, they went to Tarleton, or, oh, my HR, my head of HR went to Tarleton, or, or is from Stevieville, their mother lives here, their father, I mean, something, there's a connection. And they, and we no longer have to describe it in the same vein that we did even just a few years ago. So Stevieville's growing out there, it's going to be a good thing, and, uh, well, we're development people, we, it's a good thing for us. I know some people may not like it, but it's a good thing for us. So we're going to continue down that road. There are also some opportunities for joint, for collaborations and joint ventures and so forth, even between formerly competitive entities to get together and create some magic here in town, and they all have that interest because it's, uh, it's something that they each bring some special skill sets to the table. And so we're going to see a lot more of that as well. I say a lot more, a little bit more of that as we move forward. The mayor had a really good report the other day when he spoke to, at the Chamber banquet, and it was pretty cool, some of the things. I, I wanted to give you a few more factoids that didn't have time to, to talk about. First of all, we've talked about our trade area before, and the trade area, just as a voucher, we ran some more data on that. And the trade area right now for Stevieville is 116,174 people. We all know our population, but doing the trade area right now and what we use to recruit folks is now even greater than what we were saying last year, with an anticipation of 121, almost 122,000 by 2029, so in the next five years. We also ran a different one. If you change up your module a little bit and, and where you're actually creating your trade area, it actually can grow to as much as 208,000 people. Now, you might think, oh, there's no way, 208,000 people. But here's the difference. Lon, I think you even said this one time, maybe before Christmas, how, and it may have just been an aside, but how even Misty was, you know, shopping here, unlike maybe before, or, or more, more so anyway. I think we've all done that. We've also did more of our previous leakage money in our community. And other people are doing that as well from other towns. So just because you're in Granbury no longer means you're in Granbury and Fort Worth. Just because you're in Weatherford no longer means you're in Weatherford and Fort Worth. Stevieville now has some things that allows them the opportunity to come into our community. So now we can't count all of them, but we can manipulate some of those numbers a little bit to help account for those people that we actually can see coming into our town. And we use cell phone data, we use credit card swipes, we use things like that. So, so our primary is still the 116 that we mentioned, but our secondary market is actually over 200 grand on that. So that's why we're still seeing, even though it may have slowed to some degree, that's why we're still seeing increases in our sales tax. So I mean, I don't think anybody in here is eating more meals than you were eating before just because we've opened up more restaurants. I don't know that, you know, I don't know that you're actually even spending more money, you're just spending it more locally. So that's why those sales taxes are going up. And it is, as you said very eloquently, Mayor, that it is a choice tax, let's never forget that. This is a choice. So as long as the trends are not showcasing that we're going down in our choices, then, then we can count on a consistent amount of income and revenue for those kinds of things. So those are a couple of things. The other ones I wanted to mention, people have asked me recently about our unemployment. Just so you know, in December, I don't have the current numbers for January, what, February's not over, but December was at 3%, but the highest in the last two years has been 4.2. So we're, we're kind of trending in that, you know, three to, three to four range all the way around. Even with the new industries that we'll be hiring, we won't see much of a, of a change with that because it's, it's cyclical and we. Ours is a little bit hard to count because of the student population, but it is something that we can count on for a lot of these jobs and so forth. I think the thing that we have the most trouble with is that when you can go to Chick-fil-A or, or Brand X, whatever it is, on a restaurant or, or retail establishment, and get a pretty good decent pay, unlike the old days when we were probably all kids, I say all of us like we're the same age. But we are, you know, when we were that age, you know, those were startup jobs, right? Those were starter jobs when we would go to work at a burger shop or whatever else. And these days, it's not quite so much your starter jobs when they're offering $10,000 scholarships and, and full benefits or partial benefits, at least even as a part-timer. Those are out there and exist, and so that makes it a little bit harder for our industries. But, but we know that, and so we're addressing that. Couple of other things I wanted to showcase, and then I'll shut up. I'm going to just do two more, and that is that, you know, we always, part of what drives me and Ashley and our entire office and our board and everybody else is just being valid and being viable to our community and making sure that the work that we're doing is actually bringing some things in. The projects that we have completed thus far, well, we've been using some general numbers whenever we tell people about the number of investment. We've completed now projects from CETA of 160 million, 160.5 million dollars. And we have pending and upcoming projects that are actually, if they reach project name, or names as often referred to that nobody seems to like, once they reach project name.
They're just silly names.
But we know them, and, and we use them. So the good news is, it's not like we only have three projects. We've done, we know, we've had to come up with about 50 names in the last five years, and so.
You're creative.
And so you have to, and you have to remember what those are, because when you have eight or nine that we discuss in a board meeting, we have to remember what those look like and, and sound like. So anyway, um, we have 147 million on the books right now that, that could be coming in shortly. So that's over 310 million dollars of, of work from our office. And, and I say that carefully because in many of those, you and your predecessors had a role in. In many cases, we can't get them to the finish line without the help of administration. Jason's been phenomenal in his staff, and then of course you as a council, who make those decisions that kind of push it toward the, the finish line. So for anybody watching, I hope that they recognize that the work that you're doing, so much of what we do is, is we're doing DAs and other things that keep us from discussing until it's actually signed on the dotted line. But there's a lot of work that goes into it, and we're very appreciative of the collaboration we have with the city council, so that's it.
It's interesting, I had lunch with a lobbyist from Florida about three weeks ago. The first thing she said was, I sat down with everybody, there's 10 of us at the table, I'm going around, where are you from, where are you from? I said, Stevieville, and she said, what in the world's going on in Stevieville, Texas? She heard that, and she's from Tallahassee, Florida.
Isn't that crazy? Well, and, and Mayor, I don't know if you remember this, but, you know, obviously I'm not wearing the cowboy hat today, which is, uh, yeah. But just to kind of put a punctuation mark on that, we were having a conversation with a couple of attorneys from California, the mayor and I, when we were in Las Vegas last year. And there was somebody kind of standing around outside of our little huddle there, and, and I was just certain that he was wanting, I didn't know who he was, I thought he was going to talk to the attorneys from California. And we finished our conversation, and because of the cowboy hat, he said, you must be from Texas, and I have a problem that maybe you can help me with. And he was from New York. And so it's, it's connections like that that we're making that continue to sort of get those tentacles out there and reaching people to know more about Stevieville, Texas. And that's, that's pretty cool.
Questions from Jeff?
Anything?
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right. Okay, next item is consent agenda, I guess number 34 and 35 we want to vote on, is that correct? Since you have resolution numbers there?
No, that was if they were pulled out.
In case they were pulled out, okay. Do you have a motion about consent agenda?
Mayor, I move we approve consent is presented.
Have a motion is second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, Council, city offices will be closed on Monday, February 19th in observance of President's Day, and that's all I have.
I have a couple of things. Um, first off, I'd just like to congratulate Swindell's Jewelry for everything that they've done. Their family has been near and dear to my family's heart. Over 50 years ago, his, the original owner, um, had a display window and put an engagement and wedding set in the window. And my dad walked my mom down the sidewalk, and they looked in the window, and she picked out the ring that he had already bought earlier that day to make sure that she liked it. And we bought our wedding ring there, anyway. Wonderful family and very grateful that they were able to get that award. And secondly, I don't know if anybody has taken the time, but I recommend that you go by and see the high school's beautiful new baseball field. Another thing that's near and dear to my family's heart. They have, I don't think it's completely, totally completed, but they had a scrimmage there last night. It is, it is beautiful, and I recommend going and checking that out. And to everyone who has reached out to me after a procedure I had done a week ago, I appreciate y'all and thank you for the prayers and reaching out, and that's all I have.
Mayor, I hope I'm not breaking an NCAA rule here. But I'd like to congratulate the eighth grade boys' basketball team this year. My grandson's on it, they went 16 and 0. 16 and 0, and they're trying to research when the last team was 16 and 0 in men's basket, or boys' basketball. And so I'd like to congratulate the players and the coaches.
I got to follow up with you, and that Swindell's Jewelry. I was, you know, I haven't been here as long as Swindell's had, but. But they, that, those people in that jewelry store would do anything, anything possible if you went and said, I need a yada, yada, yada. Or I want to, I want to buy my wife a second round of wedding rings because the first one was so small. Because I was poor. I'm like, we, I was, saw that in the paper the other day, and I'm real pleased that they got that award.
Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate Battalion Chief Mitchell Hughes on his retirement from the Stevieville Fire Department, 36 years. That's impressive and amazing. And also would like to thank Darren and his staff at the parks for conducting another successful smart basketball season that ended this week, and look forward to baseball, I guess.
I've said this numerous times, but of course I love living in Stevieville, I love being from here, I love growing, love growing up here. Well, y'all know that my dad passed away a couple of weeks ago. I just want to thank everybody on the council, Mr. King, the mayor, Sarah, city staff, directors, everybody for, for reaching out and helping the, the fire department for, for always being there for, for the elderly in the town and actually anybody that, that needs help. Y'all did a great job. The police department, of course, my dad being an ex-Steville police officer, their presence at the funeral. And just everybody's out pouring in support and prayers, and I really appreciate it, it meant a lot to my family. The hospital here was great, of course, my church family at Gramsci was great. So I just wanted to tell everybody, thank you very much. Randy, thank you. Everybody was, was wonderful to my family, so thank you.
No comments.
We've got some visitors in the room, I just want to let them know that we're listening, thank you. The only thing I have is tonight, the Charleston State University, we made a presentation or proclamation for the ML Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration that was done today because of the weather a few weeks ago. With that, we did go in.
Oh, sorry, good. I thought you were going to skip me.
I would.
Okay.
We were in executive session, and we had, do we have a motion from the executive session?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, make the motion that we approve the incentive plan as discussed in executive session.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. With that, it is 7:23, that's all the items we have on the agenda, so we'll stand adjourned.